Good evening, I would like to call the July City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please take the role.
Counsel Lane.
Present.
Counsel Hopkins.
I'm Sykes.
Here.
Counsel Foley.
Here.
Counsel McHale.
Present.
Counsel Goldblum.
Present.
Counsel Bruski.
Here.
Counsel Recker.
Present.
Present. Everyone please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public acknowledgements and commendations, I'm actually going to pass the gavel to my Vice President and come down on the floor. Thank you, Counsel President. You're going to make a statement now? Thank you, Counsel Vice President. Tonight, we are recognising the CLCF U-12 Girls Soccer Team in capturing the 2016 Fall Super League Championship with a record of 8-0, the 2017 Second Session Indoor Championship with a record of 8-0, and the 2017 Spring Super League Estate Championship with a record of 8-0. A historically undefeated team with three seasons of being undefeated is an amazing accomplishment. You girls should be very proud. We'll call you up one at a time. Councilman Colford will hand you your citations. Thank you for being a service to Cranston Youth Sports, being a coach and father in Cranston whose kids do youth sports. It always prides me when Cranston teams come in here having done so well and been such upstanding citizens, so for that, we are very proud of you as the Cranston City Council. And if I butcher your name, I apologize. Bianca Abrantes. Isabella Di Stefano. Sophia Di Stefano. And Riley Welch. Sometimes underestimated but never duplicated are the efforts of the coaches. We also would like to recognise them this evening. Coach Glenn Jeffrey. Congratulations, girls. Fantastic achievement of your success. I'm going to let you guys stand up here for a second so your parents can take a picture and maybe my representative from the Herald can take one as well. Or, everyone look at that guy, second right there, with a really nice camera. Thank you. Coach Evans, if you want, you can say a few words since you're already all the way over there. It's totally up to you to walk back. Going to give the girls a couple seconds to get out of here so they don't have to listen to us debate law. While we're waiting, we have with us an intern from, I believe, the University of Rhode Island who's here tonight, Sean Akinisotu. Welcome, Sean. If you'd like to say a few words about yourself, how you came to be in the city of Cranston as our intern, we'd love to hear it.
How are you doing tonight? I'd just like to say I like the city of Cranston. I live literally like 10 minutes away from Cranston, I live in Warwick, so we're literally neighbors and I've known a bunch of people from Cranston. It's a nice city, it has nice people in here. I really do believe that Cranston is really a top-tier city in the state of Rhode Island. I believe it continue to be a top-tier city in Rhode Island and I believe that Warwick is also on its way too. And I'd like to thank you guys for having me here. I go to the University of Rhode Island, I'm going to be a senior next year, and I'm in account, I'm in for finance and Bob Strom over here, they keep saying he's the best finance director in the state, so I mean, that's what we're going to believe in, that's what we're going to believe in, and I believe in Bob Strom, so I believe that me being under Bob Strom, he can teach me a lot of things, and I believe that if anything's possible, maybe when I grow up, I could probably be the finance director in Warwick because of Bob Strom's actions. Thank you very much.
Well, you know, Sean, I majored in economics and finance with a minor in accounting and I'm the council president, so one day you may be the council president or Bob Toodleish.
Go Rhodey.
Go Rhodey. I see Director Lopez, he's standing out in the crowd. I need you for a second if you... So, before we get started tonight, I know there's a lot of stuff in the document you want to talk about, but I know recently, in the last month, we've actually hired, well, haven't hired yet, but we've advised and consent a new personnel director. And one of the things we've talked a lot about in this chamber over the last several years is diversity. So I've been thinking, since we advised and confirmed him, that we do now have a personnel director, there have been some great learnings in the police department, I'd like to, through the administration, through your Director Lopez, reactivate the Diversity Commission to really start to take a hard look at how we can make the pool of candidates greater and really drive diversity in the city.
Thank you, Counsel President, and we, the administration are also on the same page. The mayor has had a committee on diversity that has been defunct for a few years, but in light of the recent developments and the reignited interest of the community, we'll be happy to restaff that committee and we'll be happy to work with the city council to do that.
Thank you. If you could let me know, the members of the Diversity Commission, like the positions that are on it, just so we can review it and potentially have input.
Yes, Director Moxey and myself will be working on that and it will be a priority for us.
Thank you, Director Lopez, I knew it would be. Under public hearings, ordinance and acknowledgement of Chapter 20, Title 11, Coalesse City Cranston, Title of Parked Recreations, Ocean Avenue Scenic Outlook. The floor is now open to the public for any discussion on things that are before us, however, the ordinance will have a public hearing tonight as well. So it is now open to members of the community. I don't think we had a sign sheet tonight. Madam Clerk, we didn't get a sign sheet?
No.
With the other meeting. Okay, I apologize, we had a meeting before this one, so there was no time to set up a sign sheet. At this point, we'll just have them come up one at a time and try to keep some order and people can come up.
What information, timeframe?
Like usual, council meetings, four minutes. Name and address for the record. Try the other mic. Hang on, we're having a microphone difficulty tonight.
My name is Barbara Rubine. I reside at 1438 Narragansett Boulevard in Cranston. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of the Board of the Edgewood Waterfront Preservation Association in my official capacity as president of the Board. Our Board met on the evening of June 30th. At that meeting, the proposed ordinance to restrict fishing at the end of Ocean Avenue in the circumstances under which the Rhode Island Yacht Club and its members seek to restrict fishing at this publicly-owned access to Narragansett Bay was discussed. Violations of city ordinances that occur at this location at various times during the day and night were described. These violations, many of which I have personally observed and photographed over the years, include littering, the public consumption of alcohol, public urination, and prolonged parking in front of the access. Equipment such as chairs, tents, courtes are set up with numerous young children playing between cars. This occurs almost daily during the warm weather, mostly at high tide. The brochure distributed to the ordinance committee on July 13th is a compilation of my photographs with the exception of three in the top-left corner. All of my photos dated from 2012 to 2015 show a continuing problem left unaddressed for years. While EWPA and numerous volunteers have removed folding chairs, stuffed animals, liquor bottles, clothing, and other personal items from this site on a regular basis, the Board voted to take the following position despite the amount of trash often found at Ocean Avenue. The Board of EWPA believes that the city has not exhibited the willingness, capacity, or motivation to address the ongoing infractions of existing ordinances that take place at the easternmost end of Ocean, at the public access to the bay. The Board does not believe that another ordinance will correct the numerous problems at this location that are well-known to the city and include at times trespassing, pollution, noise, public indecency, and more. The Board believes that the problems identified at this site are the responsibility of the municipality and need to be aggressively addressed to protect the rights of the residents to the public access and for the rights of members of the yacht club and nearby property owners to have free and unencumbered access to their private property. This is clearly a situation where the rules and regulations of our community are being disregarded. A more aggressive enforcement policy along with the dialogue with residents, CLMC, DEM, Save the Bay, elected and appointed city and estate officials, and the yacht club could result in changes that include municipal receptacles and collection, a curfew, improved signage, parking limitations, and physical improvements to the site. Ocean Avenue could be improved like the city park at Stillhouse Cove. Improvements there enhance both visual and physical access to two beaches, the boat ramp and the park itself. EWPA's mission for more than 30 years has been to protect and enhance the waterfront areas in Cranston. The city should seek out funding sources to improve this valuable and historic access to Narragansett Bay, enforce its ordinances, and not restrict fishing, a constitutionally protected right. The overbreadth of this ordinance is demonstrated by the following analogy. All of us observe the amount of litter on Rhode Island's roads and highways. If you observe that litter carefully, you will see that much of it is coffee cups from Dunkin' Donuts. Do you think this council should close Dunkin' Donuts to address the litter from their stores? This would be an overreaction to a social problem, just like banning fishing on Ocean Avenue. We need to address our problems with education, enforcement, and improvements. I have spoken with Kevin Kute, a marine resource specialist at CLMC, who would be here were he not on vacation. Mr. Kute and members of CLMC are available to members of the city and others to discuss these problems and solutions to them. He wanted me to communicate that the icons for suggested activity in the public service document of public access points in Rhode Island should in no way be interpreted to mean that fishing is excluded if a fish icon is not posted. Ocean Avenue is not an official CLMC access point, but a public access to the bay where fishing is possible. CLMC would like a seat at the table to discuss any restrictions proposed for this location. In Mr. Kute's absence, this matter has been brought to the attention of both their legal counsel and assistant director. Mr. Kute emphasized to me that even if Ocean Avenue was a CLMC public access, that the city of Cranston is responsible for the enforcement of all ordinance violations. One issue I would like to clear up tonight concerns letters that have circulated in the neighborhood and comments made at the ordinance committee stating that the guardrail installed along Strathmore Place restricts fishing from the beach at the bottom of Strathmore Place. Please be advised that this is blatantly untrue and attempts to discredit the hard work and mission of EWPA. EWPA sought the installation of the guardrail to protect the conservation area from the numerous cars parked on restored implanted city property. Cars mostly from people inappropriately storing boats, motors, discarded...
You've been going for over four minutes, so please wrap it up.
I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Discarded marine equipment were driving over these areas that were restored with federally financed funds. No money, fence, signage, or parking restriction have been used to put in place or prohibit fishing to close down this public access. In fact, efforts are continually made to keep access open visually and physically so that city property is protected. Before our work, neighbors did not know that this was a publicly maintained road with a documented right of way to the bay. It still is. Access is used daily by the community, and I do want to show you that despite a no parking restriction along Strathmore Place, cars continually park the entire street without any effort to enforce the ordinance. It shows a lack of enforcement on Strathmore as well as Ocean, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rubine, have a good night.
I have a copy with pictures that I would like to have in the record.
Madam Clerk, can you take that for the record? Name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. My name is Scott Jabagjorian, J-A-B-A-G-J-O-R-I-A-N. I reside at 1430 Narragansett Boulevard in Cranston. I have been a resident of Edgewood for over 30 years, and my wife and I regularly walk along Stillhouse Cove and to the end of Ocean Avenue. Firstly, I'd like to say that I have nothing against fishermen per se. However, fishing in this specific location in effect denies access to all others, which defies the intent of an open access point to the shore. If the fishermen are not present, particularly during the day, and there are individuals enjoying the view, others can and do also come and enjoy the access. There is no problem. There is a harmonious coexistence. However, when the fishermen are present, other individuals and residents cannot enjoy the same access as the fishermen completely take over the area. Coolers, tents, loud music, fishing poles, lines, hooks, public drinking, small kids playing in the street, it's just not possible for others to enjoy the same access. The fishermen as a group create a very unwelcoming and frankly unsafe environment for others. Anyone with any common sense would quickly see that fishing at this specific location is not working and only serves to deny access to non-fishermen. The only way one could be against the ordinance to stop fishing here would be that they have not personally experienced what my wife and I have on so many occasions. I would like to invite all of the council members to personally visit the area, specifically after dark when the weather is warm, to see for yourselves my concerns. I think that it would be, will be abundantly clear that allowing fishing here is simply not working. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address to the record.
My name is Michael Lynn Sukosio. I live at 189 Samuel Gordon Avenue in Warwick, Rhode Island. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again. The situation on Ocean Avenue has been escalating for many years. In September, a community meeting was held at Rhode Island Yacht Club. The meeting was well-attended by members, residents of the neighborhood, city and state officials, as well as the local police department. Thankfully, members of the city council continued to listen. They asked questions, they visited the location multiple times, they worked to find a solution. We all acknowledge and agree there is a problem. We don't all agree on the solution. That is unfortunate because that's the only reason many of you are here today. If a quarter of the effort spent in just the last three weeks fighting this ordinance and those that proposed it went into solving this problem, we'd all be enjoying access to the end of Ocean Avenue instead of being here tonight. Ocean Avenue, like many other streets in Edgewood that lead to the water, is a narrow dead-end street. It's also a scenic public access point to the water. In recent years, however, access by the general public has been inhibited by a select few who are violating ordinances and are engaging in outright criminal behavior. I can't stress enough that the Rhode Island Yacht Club wishes to see public access to the shore and its use available for the safety and enjoyment of all. Again, what is happening at the end of Ocean Avenue is an environmental concern, it's a health concern, it's a safety concern. The street has become a popular place to pitch tents, drink alcohol, gut fish, garbage in condoms and human excrement washed into the bay daily. Other sections of this community have set a precedent in resolving similar issues. On two streets, Norwood Avenue and Arnold Avenue, fences were put up prohibiting not only fishing but access to the water. Again, the Rhode Island Yacht Club wishes to see public access, its use, and for the safety and enjoyment of all, especially on Ocean Avenue. The Cranston City Council has proposed an ordinance that will further assist in safeguarding the use and enjoyment of this public access. The ordinance maintains the right to fish from the shoreline, it also sets guidelines for the activity from the street to the shoreline. And since last week, I've added some extra pictures that happened on Thursday, if I may present these.
Yep. Madam Clerk, if you could take those for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Slessinger, and I live at 96 Ocean Avenue in Cranston. I believe the proposed ordinance which states there shall be no fishing at the public access point where Ocean Avenue meets the shoreline at any time is unconstitutional, and I will tell you why. First, it is my understanding that Title 20, Chapter 1 of Rhode Island General Laws, Section 20-1-2, has delegated authority over fish and wildlife in this state to the Department of Environmental Management, not to Cranston. Thus, please ask your legal counsel to provide legal precedent and not an opinion that Cranston has authority to ban fishing from Ocean Avenue. While you're at it, and in view of Section 17 of Rhode Island's Constitution granting people the constitutional right to freely fish from Rhode Island shores, how you can erect fish fencing on the seawall at the end of public thoroughfares, namely Norwood Avenue and Arnold Avenue? And I have pictures of the fences in case you want to see them. Okay. It is my understanding, after attending the hearing for Proposed Ordinance 12.20.181, that the reason for erecting the fence at Norwood Avenue was to stop public fishing. While given DEM's authority to regulate fishing, I suggest that to prevent a constitutional challenge to fencing seawalls, that you take immediate steps to remove the fences at Norwood and Arnold's Avenue. In that regard, I call your attention to 16 U.S.C., Section 1452 E2, the Congressional Declaration of Policy, which sets forth a national policy to protect public access to a sea coast for recreational purposes. The law says explicitly, "The Congress finds and declares that it is the national policy to encourage and assist the states to exercise effectively their responsibilities in the coastal zones through the development and implementation of programs which should at least provide for public access to the coast for recreational purposes." Now let's get down to what the general public is saying tonight, why Section 2 of the proposed ordinance should be adopted. Litter, public drinking, public urination, loud music, crowds, et cetera. But it's done by one class of people, according to everybody here, fishermen. Well, in case you don't know it, the same problem with litter, public drinking, loud music, urination exists right up the street, at the park on Stillhouse Cove, and every park and baseball field in the area. Except, the problem is brought to you by the entire public, not one class of people. So logic would dictate that you should ban all people from using the parks to stop litter, public drinking, public urination, et cetera. That is absurd. Instead, I suggest you go down to the seawall and meet with a fisherman to discuss the problem of litter, public drinking, urination, et cetera. Perhaps they will have some suggestions to resolve some of their complaints from my neighbors. However, I can give you one suggestion right now, which you don't have to ask anybody to do, to eliminate the litter. Install a garbage can, or two. In the Stillhouse Cove Park, you will find garbage cans which are picked up on a regular basis by Cranston. And when the city picks up the garbage at Stillhouse Cove Park, they can easily pick up the garbage at the end of Ocean Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Michael Jarboe. I'm representing Save the Bay at 100 Save the Bay Drive, Providence. Good evening, President Farina and members of the city council. I'll be brief, I've submitted written comments already, should be electronically received. If not, I do have paper copies of that available. Save the Bay opposes this ordinance and any ordinance that seeks to prohibit fishing at a public access site. Public access is core to Save the Bay's mission. We advocate to increase access to Narragansett Bay for all Rhode Islanders and seek solutions that promote public access rather than limit it. As an organization, we lead coastal cleanups throughout the state, and unfortunately, trash is not limited to locations where people fish. In our discussions with local residents, council members, city staff, and others, it is clear that fishing is not the problem. The problems include trash, noise, parking, trespassing, and other disorderly conduct. We are sensitive to those concerns and want to see them addressed, but we have yet to hear from someone who's opposed to the actual fishing that takes place at the end of Ocean Avenue, in which case, this ordinance does nothing to address the concerns that have been raised. There's a key point that needs to be highlighted. The Rhode Island Constitution guarantees all rights of fishery. This includes, but is not limited to, fishing from the shore. We do not believe that the city has the authority to ban fishing at any part of a public access site. The legislature gave the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management the sole authority to regulate fishing, and DEM reiterated this position in a July 21st letter to the city council. By instituting a ban on fishing activities, Cranston takes an unprecedented step that in our research has never been attempted in the state of Rhode Island. Assertions that fishing is still allowed on the sandy beach are dubious at best. At high tide, fishermen would have to walk down a submerged stone stairway and stand in several feet of water. This is hardly supportive of public access. In closing, Save the Bay does not support any infringement on the constitutional right to fish. We encourage the city to seek alternative solutions to address the situation. We are more than willing to work with the city council, city residents, and others to enhance public access at this location and at all other locations that have been identified by residents. Thank you.
Want to add information?
Yes.
Save the Bay, you have questions with...
Absolutely, we're happy to answer questions. Thanks.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sandy LaFon. I live at 66...
I was at the last council meeting regarding the ordinance, and it sounded like things were going the way they should. I find it interesting that people fighting against some of the control of this area are people who live in other parts of the city or the state. These are people who don't worry about, sorry, I get uncomfortable, about feeling intimidated and unsafe by other people. For years, I took daily walks every afternoon and stopped at the area to look out to the sunset and just be at peace with the scenery. However, lately, the catcalls, verbal harassment, loud music, smell of rotting fish heads and fish guts, and trash have spoiled that. On one occasion, I have seen what looked like a pit bull tied to the back of a fisherman's vehicle, which I personally think is cruel, barking viciously and straining to break free to chase a neighborhood dog being walked by someone who lives in the Edgewood area and a dog that was on a leash. The fisherman proceeded to yell at the woman to not walk her dog near his dog. How much more do we have to put up with? The men who fish there, and I have asked some of the women who have been with them, who have been friendly enough to speak, where they live and where they are traveling from. Surprisingly, very few are from the Cranston area. They are from Fall River, Pawtucket, and Providence. They don't really care about the local environment in our area. They worry about the environment in their area. That is why they don't worry about litter, urination, and everything else that we've heard about. Yesterday afternoon around 4:30, there were two cars at that area when we were leaving. One had a fisherman standing behind it, and he was enjoying his day of fishing. The other one had a fishing pole propped in the bumper of the car. He was facing the opposite direction, not looking at the fishing pole, drinking and listening to loud music. Again, we've heard all these stories, but this is a matter that makes us feel unsafe in that neighborhood. We pay taxes to the city of Cranston. We shouldn't feel uncomfortable walking in our neighborhood. I feel that if this is voted against, you are doing the neighbors in that area a disservice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, President and council members. My name is Rich Hittinger. I live at 326 Thames Avenue in Warwick. I'm the first vice president of the Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association, and we believe that banning fishing from this public access point will not directly address the concerns that neighbors have. The concerns seem to be related to tents, alcohol, and litter. This is, this needs to be communicated to the individuals that go to this area and enforced in a way that these behaviors will not be allowed. In addition, banning fishing from this access point is likely not constitutional under Rhode Island law. I would respectfully suggest that rather than ban this fishing, the city should improve signage in the area and provide some trash receptacles. Until these steps are taken and given a chance along this enforcement, our opinion is that the proposed ban is way too soon. It is not fishing that is the source of these complaints. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Name and address to the record.
Good evening. George Aldrich, 84 Whiting Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I was here last meeting, and my main concern, although I do have sheer concerns with other people from the Rhode Island Yacht Club with the music and urination and litter, but my main concern, as I said last time, is safety. Right, safety? I have six children, I have eight grandchildren, a couple more coming. They come down, they boat. The fishermen have children, one, two years old. They park two, three cars on the street. You're pulling into a driveway, all of a sudden you have to stop. You're only going 15 miles an hour, but boom! It could happen that quick. So what needs to happen is that we have to put a ban on this and then look at this problem before something happens. I personally have had a very bad experience with an accident with my son. I had a son that passed. I don't want another grandchild to run from my hand at two years old when I'm parking, and I've watched them all day long. They pull in and out, backwards and forwards, and I understand protecting the federally-funded grass, this and that, God bless it. But what my main concern is, safety of the kids, not only my children and other children here, but safety of the fishermen's children. And I really think it has to be banned now at this point, and I hope the council votes in favor of it. Thank you.
My name is Dave Monti, M-O-N-T-I, 399 Greenwood Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island. I am a member, vice chair of the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council, which makes recreational and commercial fishing regulations to the Department of Environmental Management Director. I'm also a charter captain and fishing guide, and I am a member of the Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association and serve as second vice president and chair of their Public Policy and Access Committee. We, as an organization, and I think I've shared this before, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers has 7,500 members throughout Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, primarily in Rhode Island, affiliated members representing 30 different fishing clubs. And we, as a matter of course, work with cities and towns on these very issues, the access issues, to try to find creative solutions, because we have found, as others have said, that fishing generally is not the issue, but litter is the issue, behavior, the hours of a particular fishing location. Some of the creative solutions that we work with, with the State of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, we have actually worked with them to develop, and actually our foundation is paid for signing at many federal locations, many state fishing locations, about fishing access, the rules, the regulations, et cetera. We have funded the development of line dispensers at fishing access points, and we have served as counsel to cities and towns as to how to work with fishermen on a cooperative basis. We've also worked with the Attorney General quite a bit on access issues, bringing lawsuits against cities and towns in regard to access issues. I beg, as others have tonight, that fishing is not the issue here. We feel that it is a constitutional right to give someone the access to fish. By banning fishing in this area and saying that you can fish from shore, it is a deterrent. In essence, you're banning fishing, and that's not going to fool anybody. So I thank you, and I make the organization available, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, to help the city of Cranston if it so chooses to call on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address to the record, please.
Gretchen Bingo, 27 Perennial Drive. President Farina and city council members, thank you for your time. We are a group of residents living in and around Garden City who have long cherished the quality of life we enjoy in this community. We support the improvements and the developments of the Garden City Shopping Center and in Chapelview, recognizing that this progress is vital to the long-term prosperity of the Garden City area and Cranston as a whole. With that said, this growth must be done thoughtfully and purposefully to preserve the quality of life in our communities. Traffic and safety are growing concerns. The main roads within the Garden City neighborhood are becoming main thoroughfares for drivers trying to avoid congestion on Sackinossit Crossroad. We're experiencing more stop sign violations and speeding in our neighborhood. We do not have sidewalks, therefore, traffic safety is essential for residents walking in the neighborhood, especially with children and pets. At peak times of the day, traffic on Sackinossit is congested to the point of being dangerous. Drivers seem to be in a state of confusion at all intersections. Traffic entering and exiting other businesses along this road also add to the confusion. Additionally, we're very concerned about the fire station's ability to respond quickly to emergencies. The new development in the parcel of land behind the Cranston Public Library known as Plat 15 and continued expansion of the Garden City Shopping Center will increase traffic on these already congested roads. Our group recently met with Kelly Coates of Carpi and Auto Group and his team. Councilman Michael Favickio of Ward 6 was also in attendance. The Carpi and Auto Group presented improvements to the major intersections of Sackinossit at Pontiac Avenue and Reservoir Avenue, along with the possibility of an additional traffic light on Sackinossit. These are well thought out and much needed improvements, however, there's still work to be done, specifically to address the confusion at the intersection of Sackinossit with Hillside Road and to address the intersection at Midway, as well as the flow of traffic entering and exiting other businesses. We want assurance that traffic flow on Sackinossit Crossroads is a priority consideration for the city as both shopping centers continue to grow. We'd also like to note that construction of the Rhode Island State Attorney General's Office Building on the corner of Pontiac and Howard Avenue and future development at 100 Sackinossit will further impact this already congested area. We're asking for immediate action to address our concerns, to maintain a safe and efficient flow on Sackinossit Crossroads, and to preserve the quality of life for residents of Garden City and surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Pauline DeRosa. I live at 97 Cypress Drive. I am here to applaud Councilman Michael Favickio's resolution to urge the administration to conduct the study of the traffic issues at the Sackinossit Corridor. We all take pride in sharing in the greater Garden City area with all of Rhode Island throughout the year and particularly during the holiday shopping season. Part of the allure of the community is its walkability and the relative safety of the area, but we are seeing that these attributes are being compromised by an increase in traffic, with parking in noise also becoming an issue for those living closest to the Garden City Shopping Center. The increase in the number of vehicles using Sackinossit Crossroads and the resulting congestion has forced many motorists to navigate the interior roads in the Garden City neighborhood, an area that seems to be ideal for those wanting to get to points north on Pontiac Avenue. This in turn has resulted in an increase in speeding, as well as numerous stop sign violations. This sort of reckless behavior is dangerous and unacceptable. Obviously motorists have a right to take whatever route they choose, but it must be done in a responsible manner. With all due respect to the Carpi and Auto Group, the Garden City neighborhood was built approximately 70 years ago in the budding neighborhoods well before that time. The Chapelview development is about eight or nine years old, and its expansion continues, bringing with it an increase in the volume of transient vehicles in our neighborhoods to an unacceptable level, and we see no respite in sight. The Garden City Center also adds to this frustration. It is incumbent upon the city to be proactive in addressing these issues prior to any further expansion of Chapelview and Garden City Center. We cannot wait three to five years before a thorough traffic impact study is completed for the Sackinossit Corridor. The city of Cranston needs to be diligent in addressing this resolution and make it a priority. The safety of our residents and neighborhoods is of paramount concern, and now is the time for the city to assert its responsibility to its citizens and see that a truly independent study is completed and acted upon, and not to solely rely on a study conducted by the Carpi and Auto Group or the Wylder Group.
Good evening, council members. Council President Farina, councilman. I hope everyone's doing well. My name is Robert Santeri Jr. It's S-A-N-T-U-2-R-Z-A-N-I, and I live at 30 Egan Road here in Cranston. I'm here to talk about, for docket items, two items this evening. One is I am happy to see Councilman Favickio's resolution to address the traffic concerns on Sackinossit Crossroad in the general area. As someone who's up here, it seems like five months ago now it came up, discussion of traffic congestion issues, and I don't know offhand, maybe someone can provide at some point, when the last traffic study was done on Sackinossit Crossroad, if it was done before or after all the recent renovations to Garden City? And I don't really know why it wasn't done before the ordinance was passed in February to, you know, give Garden City con implants pretty much, to just start making changes in the future. It just seems like something should have been done sooner, but here we are now. I also want to agree with the point made before that as someone who uses the area every day, I do see police and mostly fire vehicles have issues at times navigating Sackinossit Crossroad because of the amount of congestion and traffic. One experience myself was a fire truck came barreling through last week at 60, 65 miles per hour, and everyone pulled over, well, half the people pulled over, half the people didn't, and then as soon as the fire truck went by, everyone decided to decide just go right back into traffic and almost actually cause an accident, which would require a fire truck ironically enough. So I'm hopefully to see the congestion issues addressed sooner and later. And also too, since the Wylder Group and Chapelview have making these plans for, you know, Garden City changes and everything years ahead of time, maybe this study can also take into account some of the changes they're making in Garden City, such as the phase to add Tavern on the Square and all the other businesses they're adding, and maybe see what kind of changes that's going to have in the traffic flow with three new businesses that say 70 people, and they're answering, how many cars? Forty to 50 cars going into Garden City in an hour at a time? Never mind what they're going to be adding in Chapelview, and so on, and so on, especially since they're putting a drive-through Starbucks in Chapelview, and while I drive my Starbucks, I can't imagine that's going to be going well for traffic congestion. And the other big issue real quick I want to address on the docket this evening is the, glad to see the bond issue coming to the full council this evening, and I think having heard earlier the presentation about, from the state, about the school committee and about whether the state of our schools in Cranston, I think that transparency on the bond issues is more important than ever. And I think that having available how we're going to be spending the $20 million, especially for the roads over the next four to five years or however long they're going to be spending the money, especially since roads only get $4 million a year or so here in Cranston, or at least it was budgeted that so last time, and since, so I think it'd be really vital so the public can see, you know, where is their bond money going, especially since, as you can see with Sackinossit Crossroad and Reservoir Avenue elsewhere, and, you know, it's state roads, but other roads in Cranston really just help too. So thank you for your time this evening, and thank you very much.
Name and address to the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Sakosio. I live at 79 Village Court in West Warwick. I am a member at the Rhode Island Yacht Club, and I have been for several years now. The access point that everybody's talking about, I understand what the professional organizations are saying, but I just don't understand how standing on a public road, casting a line from me to yourself, is preventing fishing if you're saying, no, go down to the seawall, go down to the beach and go there. Now granted, the ocean rises. It's called the tide. It's been happening since the beginning of time. I don't know how long, how high the tide was when that seawall was built, if the water's higher. It's a shame, but when you're standing in the road, blocking traffic, defecating, urinating, bruise... higher. It's a shame, but when you're standing in the road, blocking traffic, defecating, urinating, bruise, the whole nine. If I did that at the end of my street into a pond, I'm sure anyone in the world wouldn't have a problem calling the cops and saying, this guy's out here drinking in a public street with his kids running around. And I actually feel bad because people are trying to, you know, they're trying to enjoy their life, but it's a hazard. There's a lot of people down there. Well, for most of the people there, it's all second homes. I mean, we all go there because we're, you know, enjoying the view, enjoying our scenery, enjoying our second homes, and enjoying what we have, and when you go down there and you feel bad because these people are parked in the street with fishing poles in their bumpers on the road, not on the beach, not on the public access. The beach is there, the driveway's there, and you're fishing where these people are sitting. That's where you're casting your line from. You're in the street. So, I mean, I understand the concern, but by moving it to the beach or moving it off of the road, I don't see where the harm is in that. It's actually going to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony tonight. Name and address the record, sir.
Nicholas Rampon, 2 Kern Acre Drive, Johnston, Rhode Island, Past Comma, Rhode Island Yacht Club. And I listened to all the testimony tonight, for example, the anglers, and I love the sporting organization, and I'm sure they all have licenses to fish. I don't know if DEM's here tonight, but I've called DEM recently, and they're probably not here because when they were down there, nobody has licenses, but I'm sure the anglers want everybody to have a license. It's only proper. And then I listen to the anglers threatening to sue the committee, the council, the city. Norwood's blocked off, they never sued anybody. Honig's blocked off, they never mentioned a lawsuit. All of a sudden they want a lawsuit. So be it. What's right for the people, for one is right for all. Then you have the EWPA. I had the privilege of speaking to one of their members, no names mentioned. The whole committee is not in favor of what they are proposing. They're in favor of what the council's proposing, because they stopped the pollution on Strathmore, but they want to allow the pollution on Ocean Avenue. So let's look at the big picture. We had a council in the last session say, it's normal to see a comet in front of your house. It's on record. I've lived in four communities, I'm 60 years old, never seen one in front of my house, so I don't know what's going on in front of their house. So let's look at the big picture. It's not about Rhode Island Yacht Club, it's about the citizens of Stillhouse Cove, Edgewood, to be able to enjoy what they have down at a waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Pollak, 48 Hurdes Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, and I am a member of Rhode Island Yacht Club for approximately the last two years. I'm not going to be redundant in everything that's been said tonight. I just, I believe everybody has a copy of the pictures that were given to you tonight. If you look at the second one up from the right, and the third up from the left, that was last Wednesday. I was there. There were, and I'm not a fisherman, so I apologize, but I believe it was said at the ordinance committee that one fishing pole per so many feet, 12 fishing poles last Wednesday when I was there at one time. I've devoted my life to public safety in this city. There are children running around the end of that street unattended. There are litter problems. God forbid somebody hits one of those children. Trust me, like I said, I've devoted my life to public safety in this city. The last thing you want to be there is see a child hit by a car. There were litter issues. Barrels, that's fine. I was brought up not to litter. People should have no sense. If there are not barrels there, take your trash home, but they don't. So I don't know where the liability lies, but I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Good evening.
Hello.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paulat Rampon, 2 Kern Acre Drive, Johnston. Council President Farina, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I'm afraid I'm going to be a little redundant because I'm a little later on in the, in the order. My husband and I are members of the Rhode Island Yacht Club, and we have been since approximately 2007. When we first started there, there were fishing, there's always been fishing, and it's never really been a problem. And as Chuck Pollak just indicated, we're not talking about one or two fishermen enjoying their sport. We're talking multiple men with multiple lines, and they, and they're just not there with their, with their fishing gear, they're bringing their liquor, which I know I'm being redundant, and their coolers, and their children, and their loud music. And it's, it's not fair, and you know, I'm listening to the Anglers Association and the other people that have spoken, and they're talking about the rights and the constitutional rights of the fishermen, but what about the rights of the residents and the people that, that pay taxes to be there? I mean, the Rhode Island Yacht Club pays a lot of taxes to the City of Cranston. We don't utilize any city services, except when there's a problem, we have to call the police department. But what about our rights? Do we not have the right to enjoy where we are? I, you know, I'm just, I'm dumbfounded by that. They, they just keep harping on that, so anyway. As a member of the yacht club, I'm there often, and I've more than once pulled into the parking lot, not been able to pull my car in because their, their children are running around, they have their cars double parked off of the seawall, multiple fishing poles. You know, my husband and I try to go to sleep at night, there's loud music, and I know, you know, you're going to say, call the police. Well, when someone's urinating in front of you and you call Cranston Police, by the time the policeman gets there, he's done. You know, so it has to be a restriction in the, in the amount of fishermen that are allowed. If you're not going to restrict fishing altogether, then you have to restrict the number of people that can be at the end of that street. I mean, you can't have 20 people at the end of a street that's not even from me to the wall. It just doesn't make sense. It, it just, it's not safe. And, and, you know, one of the other members talked about his grandchildren, and I've almost hit a child too. I mean, and most of the members here will probably tell you the same thing. You know, I've cleaned up on Ocean Avenue, as most of the members have, and I've picked up dirty diapers, I've picked up bottles, I've picked up clothing, I've picked up all kinds of trash, and, you know, it, I, to me, I don't think putting a barrel there, we put bags there. And some people are good, you know, so I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying everyone's bad, some people will pick their trash up and take it with them, but not everyone's going to do that. And someone else mentioned that the people that are there are not necessarily from the community that lives there. So they don't have the pride in Stillhouse Cove that Barbara Rubine and her group have in it. They don't care, they're not, they're not from your community, Mr. Sakos. So I, I recognize the fact that you don't support this bill, but I think if you were down there when some of this stuff was happening, I think you would have a different opinion of what it's like to be there while it's happening. And, you know, so I'd really like everyone to consider that, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Excuse me. My name is Robert DeVignan. I live at 64 Ocean Avenue in Cranston. My wife and I have lived at that location for 43 years. We have experienced, for the first 20 years, basically an occasional teenager at night drinking and what have you. In the last 20 years, and it has escalated, the traffic of the fishermen and the, the element that is down there is, it's not a nuisance, it's more than a nuisance. I have called the police probably in excess of 30 to 50 times over the 20-year period. The police have met with me on many occasions. I've met with the members of the, the, the community. I was legal counsel to the Edgewood Waterfront Preservation Group in years past and was very instrumental prior to Barbara Rubine in doing a lot of the good things in Stillhouse Cove. And so I am not against the access points, I'm not against the fishing per se, but this area cannot tolerate the number of fishermen that congregate at this location. It's just too small. It's a 10, 10-foot wide by probably less than 30 feet. Somebody said 40 feet. I've measured it, it's not 40 feet. So there is not enough room there for the fishermen plus access to the shoreline. There just is not enough room. I understand the constitutional issues, but I believe that the health and welfare of the community is paramount. You cannot have, the fishermen have a right to fish. Is it a right that is beyond reproach? Is it a right that can abrogate every civil right that the rest of the residents have? I don't think so. And I think there's been enough testimony tonight to convince that it's not only a solitary problem, it's a problem that's been going on for years. In 2005, I came to this council, and we, through Councilman Livingston, enacted an ordinance, a sound ordinance, noise ordinance, litter ordinance, and an ordinance, a time ordinance. The police were called in limbo times by me to enforce that ordinance. By the time they got there, there was no evidence of any violation of that ordinance. In 2012, we attempted, we met with the yacht club myself and members of the community and the police department, the mayor, councilmen, and representatives. We were promised that something would happen. The problem is that the only way that anything is going to happen is to eliminate the fishermen. Now, is it unconstitutional?
Yes.
The, the, the question is, is the health, safety, and welfare of the community to be advocated for the right of a fisherman who violates those fundamental constitutional rights? So I say to you that, you know, we have to be, look at this, but if we want to look at, at the law, I think we cannot avoid looking at the preamble to the Constitution, which talks about the general welfare of the community is paramount to this Constitution. We've got to look at the Bill of Rights, the property rights of individuals, the property rights that cannot be violated. My property rights are being violated by my ability not to enjoy the fundamental rights of property ownership, peace, quiet, health, and safety. My wife is very upset that I'm here. She's afraid of the repercussions. We've had dead fish on our front doorstep because we called the police. Put in another ordinance, no noise, all arrest, and allow the fishermen there, not going to help. I think this council is very courageous to entertain this ordinance with the, the public consternation that you see tonight from, from certain groups. So I, I, I don't know how else we can resolve it. A dialogue with the fishermen is not going to work. I've had my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony tonight, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hope Polkington. I live at 12 Selkirk Road for the last 49 years. I don't mind the fishermen. I don't mind them at all, except it defies common sense that they're allowed. The water we're talking about is not Maragansett Bay, it's the Providence River. It has been polluted for pretty nearly 100 years. It is still polluted. For the last couple of weeks, just rock out your door, open a window, you smell effluent. It's in the air. I met a neighbor the other day, she said, what is that smell? She was new to the neighborhood. I said, uh, poop. She said, that's what my husband said, I called the plumber. I had a plumber in because I thought the toilet was broken. That's how bad it is. And the plumber came in and said, it's the water. That's what the fishermen are fishing in. Hepatitis A is caused by fish from polluted water and/or being in or near polluted water. I would like to suggest that DEM and the Health Department come down and take a look at what is going on here with this water that people are allowed to fish in. I don't think it's, it is not healthy. Hepatitis A will make you very sick. It will not kill you, but it will make you very sick. It's a liver disease. It is contagious. People are fishing, if they are catching the fish, they're, they're bound to be sick because it is, it is unhealthy. It shouldn't be allowed, not because they're fishermen, not because there's trash. All of those things are correct. I agreed with everyone on both sides, but the fact remains, it shouldn't be allowed for fishing because it's unhealthy. You wouldn't allow, you don't, they're not allowing fishing in Roger Williams Park, in the newspaper, on television, for the same reason, but because it's the bay? It's not the bay. It's the Providence River, the stinky, dirty Providence River. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in the public to speak?
Ken Rule, 66 Nelson Road.
Good evening, Mr. Rule.
How you doing? How's it going, Council President?
Pretty good.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Ken.
You all are doing a good job. I want to speak on behalf of issuing the bond for the, for the fire apparatus and the public safety equipment for the fire department. I just want you guys to know, and ladies, to know that your money's going to be well spent, and it's going to be taken care of very well. I'd like to speak on behalf of our maintenance department, who's taking care of all our trucks my whole career. I have 33 years on the job. I'll give you an anecdotal story today. This morning, I was chief on duty at Station 1, the station I spent my career at. The reserve engine was the truck that was put in service the day I was hired 33 years ago. That truck has had two refurbs in my career, once every 12 years, complete body off, do the whole body over, redo the pumps, redo the tanks. We just decommissioned a ladder truck that was bought in 1974. It was already 10 years old when I got on the job. That truck was refurbished three times. Our maintenance division keeps these trucks together. In fact, that truck this morning was leaking like a sieve from the radiator, and the radiator has to be rebuilt constantly by the maintenance department to keep that truck ready to go for us, but there's no pot. They don't make them anymore. All the trucks, we like the cars that you have today, they're all digital, all electronic, or so are our fire engines now, and nowadays they're all interconnected. And we have to use our reserve trucks, then our equipped, as well as our new trucks, so we have to deviate from our SOPs that we use today and revert back to our old SOPs. Recently, Chief Patton, this is Chief Patton, did an unbelievable job. He bought that ladder truck for $30,000. He bought that ladder truck for thirty thousand dollars. That's never going to happen again. I can't believe he got that truck. The truck he got from the service, unbelievable truck. That truck, they got from, from, from the government, is a truck that has everything you need and nothing you don't. The ladder truck he got is something that the city agrees that we'd never buy. That truck would cost two and a half million dollars to replace the way it's set up. If you look at it, it's got all the chrome wheels, all the bells, and this is, it's like getting the best Cadillac in the world. We don't buy trucks like that. All right, we have a truck company, that's very true. If you look at all our trucks, we got black, orange, metal wheels, you know, we don't have all the bells and whistles on them, they're not made up pretty, they don't have the gold leaf, we don't do any of that. But we have a team of people made up of firefighters, the chief of the department, Chief Patno, the mechanics, and we try to keep everything where they can be, they can be continuity, they can be continuity in the way the trucks are set up. So when guys are detailing the different trucks, well, they have to use a reserve truck, we're not running around like a Chinese firefighter trying to find the tools in. They're set up so that they have the same equipment that we need to service the city here, not some city out in the flat maze of Phoenix or somewhere. So it's very important that we keep this continuity going. And right now, we've been running into a situation where sometimes we don't have reserve trucks because we don't have the parts to keep everything in service. So I just want you to know, okay, your money's going to be well spent, it's going to be well taken care of, as it always has a history of doing that. So we speak in favor, and also on a personal note, I'm speaking in favor of the laborers' contract and all the other bond issues here to keep the city moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rule. I agree with Mr. Dan Durvis. Thank you so much for all your cooperation. You're very thoughtful, very open-minded. Anyone else? That portion of the meeting, move.
I certainly speak on what I say. I just want to bring to the house of attention that this is a longstanding problem that has gone worse over the years. I moved to Edwin in nineteen seventy-seven, so I've been here forty years this year. In two thousand and five, the city attempted a deposition by passing an ordinance specifically addressing the sort of kind of set of timelines between tenth and eighth year. No person shall have any fight over music. And I'm trying to think, it was, it didn't address parking. The traffic engineer at the time, Dave Ferguson, was aware that the issue of any situation directly related to the state where you're going to shoreline public access located at East End and West Terminus. And so he has his findings, which I share with anyone who wants it, but he states, "I contacted the Royal Coastal Resources Management Council and spoke to one of their personnel, Lieutenant Anderson, directly to ask about the regulations in respect to shoreline access boundaries and hours of use. Mister Anderson explained that the boundary given to the coastal feature to a meeting higher order along the shoreline of the access area. Anything beyond that would be party, such as the city-owned roadway, property as defined by D E D or public records. He further stated that there were no hours of use restrictions within the shoreline access, as long as the border is deemed appropriate for recreational purposes. He did note that currently there were some shellfish restrictions. Other than that, there were no other restrictions. I further discussed whether the cities or towns that have these shoreline access limits are required to maintain parking rights for persons using them. Mister Anderson stated that each city or town had the right to regulate this aspect if there were issues that required attention. His memo was sent to state that there were faded signs regarding tenure void or intercoast or being replaced. In fact, there were signs replaced after this ordinance was passed, which have subsequently disappeared. With regard to trash receptacles, the city did have trash receptacles there at one point, and they were removed because they were being misused. I, I don't know exactly what was being dumped in them, but it was a conscious decision by the Department of Public Works at the time. The issue is whether that location is appropriate to, because of the size of the location and the use, the uses are allowing fishermen to fish here, monopolizing that area, which then obstructs the general public's overall enjoyment. The walkers, and I'm a walker, and I don't go down very long because they're constantly fishing. And Councilwoman Stychos said, "I was going to call you public works to come walk with me," and I will do that when I go out in the future, because every single time I have gone out, there's multiple fishing people. And there's another issue with this location, parking should probably seriously be looked at again. The fishermen park directly in front of the ocean view, which is pure as reveal and just takes away from the general enjoyment. They park along the side of the road, or whoever, it might not be down there, cars parked there. The other day, I went down there with a friend, I was driving down there to show the location, and I pulled up behind the parked cars, car pulled up behind me, I couldn't get out, I was blocked in, it was no exit of the street without going onto the Royal National Club's It just is not, the space there is so limited, and the multiple uses are just not compatible. So who has greater rights to allow fishing people to fish off a street, denying residents' the area enjoyment? I think not. This council, when you have issues from your constituents, Garden City, you are on it like white on rice. Well, this is edgy, and we have a very, very precious and limited resource that that community enjoys. It needs to be protected, and these ordinances were not addressed. And what happens is, because the people who come in are not part of the community, they do not respect it, it is being misused. And it's, it's gotten worse over the years, and it will continue to get worse. And there will be, I predict, some physical alteration at some point in the future if this isn't addressed. So it's not about, you know, how's your high tide? I'm not a member of the art club, I don't have a boat, I walk, that was a precious spot to me that has been taken away. Other cities and towns in the state have parks in areas that are residents-only, but we can't. Honestly, you know what? My idea, dig up the tarmac there, rid the barrier, put up a little meditation garden for walkers, no fishing, no music, nothing. And the access points to be sure, if that, the high tide comes up to the seawall, well, that may be why it's not appropriate for fishing.
Here, here.
Thank you for your time, motion in the meeting. Before we move on with the resolution, the school committee and the members of the administration have been patiently sitting here since six o'clock, so I would like to entertain a motion to hear their two ordinances before us for collective bargaining out of order, so we can, as we pass unanimously through the finance committee, my assumption is there will be no issue with them, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, to hear those two motions about collective bargaining out of order.
Motion to suspend the rules, second.
Have motion to suspend the rules to hear the two collective bargaining agreements. I have a second and discussion. They're being done. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Figg?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Volker?
Yes.
Councilman Abloski?
Yes.
Councilman Vekio?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Vice President Vivekio, they are in finance, so the ball is yours.
Thank you, Council President. We have six dash seventeen, that show pretty, ordinance ratifying two committees' collective bargaining agreement with the Royal Laborers District Council, which is from two great people in the unit. This passed in committee, and I heard the passage.
Motion to approve, second. Have motion and a second, under discussion. Councilwoman Stychos.
Yeah. At the committee meeting, I raised the issue of the fact that there's no state budget, and that the Royal Department of Education has told the school department that absent the state budget, they'll be getting two point nine million dollars less in state aid. These two contracts together are about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and my concern is that we are making commitments for a hundred and ten thousand dollars when we're looking at the possibility of a two point nine million dollar shortfall in the, in the school budget. The, the, I think the big issue is that the budget that was built and promised two point nine million had extra revenue in it that is not being collected as of July first. So even if a budget is, that budget is passed, depending on when it's passed, there's going to be a shortfall. And that shortfall, of course, doesn't necessarily come out of the school budget, but it's got to come out of somewhere. So I guess I'm, I'm looking for, I think the contracts are very reasonable, the two percent raises are very reasonable, I would support the contracts, but I'm, I'm worried about this, this financial problem that we may be digging for ourselves, and I'd just like anyone to comment on that.
Anyone can comment, and Councilman Stychos is clear here. Looks like you have no take, Mr. Councilman.
Well, I guess the other question is, what harm would be done by continuing this, these votes until the next council meeting? Any objection to that?
Looks like, are the Jordan, like to comment?
Yeah. Will, will, is there any ready? I think, I think I'll be able to.
Yes. The microphone for, for the senator, please.
Good evening, Mr. Joe, name and address, right?
Arthur Jordan, thirty-five, Lincoln Park, Avenue, Crane. I understand some of your concerns, but at this point, I, I can tell you that there's a massive shortage of bus drivers. Some of the, the runs that point that for a student actually did some of the subcontracting, they don't even provide to they, they don't affect. We had, you know, our staff, they haven't had any in a few years. This rate sets up to thirty-two cents, and to make them wait any longer because of something that may or may not happen, it's just unfair. We negotiated in, in good faith, we came to a fair agreement, which is only a two percent wage increase. We'd like to see it moved on, and it didn't happen overnight, it went on and on, negotiations were long, were deep, but fair, and unfortunately, with some of the circumstances that have to bring us in, but they also have houses and taxes that they have to pay to the city
Thanks, Mr. Joe. Any other questions? Councilman Lee?
I truly understand where Mr. Stychos is coming, Councilman Stychos is coming from. You know, he's got to do shared responsibility, like the rest of us, to make sure we protect the interests of the taxpayers. However, two percent interest, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in two contracts, is a bit, we spend more of that, now we can legalize it percent. So if we cut down the legal fees, I'm sure we can afford this contract, and probably any other contracts in the future. I'm in favor of this, I'm willing, and I'll be voting for it.
Councilman Arquette?
I expect Councilman Stychos is considering that, I thought personally it had, but I think the fiscal stability of the city, the sovereignty, I think the bridge made fun, I think we're solid, we can pass both the contracts and receive the problem.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I had a comment, I know that this is brought up in committee, I asked a question to our attorney, Mr. Rosson, that night, if we would be violating failed labor practices by not passing this, it was negotiated in good faith, and he said it potentially could be an urged passage. We have a twenty-three million dollar rainy day fund, and if for some reason the General Assembly does not get their heads out of there and figure this out, then we will cover it. So I urge passage on this to move forward, keep Princeton in a bright, positive future, and for all the employees who are going raise lists, and I see the buses parked at every school that say, "We need bus drivers, now hiring, we need bus drivers," I mean, that is a full court, if I ever see one, to get people to drive buses, so I think we should support this to get more bus seats. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Volker?
Yes.
Councilman Abloski?
Yes.
Councilman Vekio?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have six seventeen oh four, ordinance ratifying school please collective bargaining agreement to Laborers District Council thirteen twenty-two. This is for the bus drivers.
Motion to approve, second. I have motion and second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Volker?
Yes.
Councilman Vekio?
Yes.
Yes. I will turn, thank you, Mr. Member of the school committee, thank you for coming early and giving us the presentation. To Councilman Vivekio, let me go back to your resolution on the document, and I recommend you to discuss the resolution and the potential resolution to the resolution.
Do you want to, I mean, dressing, when I'm addressing six seventeen oh two, motion to the resolution?
Back to the beginning of the document.
The one, again, which is six seventeen oh two, which is the ordinance ratifying the resolution that I have.
I'm sorry, in the resolution of the resolution, or in the administration, because the, the ordinance will come in the mortgage committee, so I do have your resolution under resolutions.
Director Monsign, Director Lopez, so we had, we had the city involved, and we spent a couple of hours coming up with some ideas, and I think that we've seen, and this is put on the first calendar, we're not going to take any actions tonight, but we've already done quite a bit of, some, some ideas, some solutions to some of the immediate problems. Some of the other issues are going to take a long time because of the need for D O T approval for certain improvements that the Department of Public Works wants to make. So I just wanted everyone to know that, you know, we've already made a decision to study this. It will be within the public courts committee, it will be a separate committee, it will be common, pass the track of taking committees, unfortunately, we don't get much participation from members outside the council, so, and I know Director Monsign would like to see him go make a statement as well, since she was involved in this last meeting, which occurred Friday.
Director Shup.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank Councilman Vivekio for his time last week, and for sitting with the administration. We absolutely see the issue, we're concerned about the issue as well. We have two major developments, we're absolutely excited about both of those developments, but we also want to stay with neighbors and all of everything. So Councilman Vivekio has expressed a lot of the concerns that the group has, someone who reached out to me directly, as well as the mayor and Director Lopez. So there are some short-term things that the council said that we can do in the immediate, we're already looking at some late-timing issues on Saka Nasa and see what we might be able to do. There's going to be some cost involved in control panels, but we're going to look to see if there's some funding we can get to work on those. We are going, also working with both developers on that signage to sort of maybe divert traffic in a better way into both sides of Garden City, because right now, everything sort of clustered right at Saka Nasa in New London. We're also told to work, and we are, we'll be practical, and D O T is continuing to take action as much as we possibly can with D O T for that honey act happening with Saka Nasa intersection, because a big part of the problem is that we have an issue there as well, and that was a huge battle for nineteen thirty-seven. So a lot of it is going to be diverting traffic, a lot of it has to do with signage, and we will work with the councilman further for the traffic studies themselves, but in the meantime, short of the traffic studies, there are those short-term fixes that we can look at, and we will be continuing to do so. We already have public works in process as a result of our hard meeting, so I want to thank Councilman Vivekio and say that the administration is very much in support of trying to get some type of a traffic study done, and continuing, and I know Director Lopez talked today, I believe, to Carpe and Otto, as well, that the developers can continue the discussion for us on that, and we'll be talking about Garden City as well.
Thank you, Director Shup.
Just to, just to build a point of information, I could also speak with Mr. Murray, attorney representative of the city as well, and his background, his, his, we're going to ask them of their involvement as well.
Councilman Vekio.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, I just want to acknowledge your being Council Vice President.
Vice President, Fodder, for all the hard work, and has put in a lot of time on this issue, and I would need support for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a little statement, it's Councilman Fodder, you want to vote me on to make sure the traffic issues in Garden City are well protected. I too will be supporting any and all efforts to make sure that the needs of residents are upheld, so if you talk about this in public works, you can count my support. We don't have to take a vote on this, so, oh, Councilman Lang, I apologize.
I'm glad to see all the work that's been done on this traffic study that we're going to have in the future in Garden City. If I remember correctly, when we discussed giving Garden City, the developer's own property, the Philly over, for the city planning commission to check, and not the council, nobody brought up a traffic study at that time. So we're doing it after the fact, and I think Council Vice President Fodder, all the current world will do it now, but it should have been six, seven months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve it, to withdraw it, so we can move on with the business, or we can vote it down, but I don't want to vote it down. So, Madam Clerk, who made the motion?
Um, well, we, 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 we.
So those seconds, we'll withdraw, we can move on with the business for the minute. Again, to the people of Garden City, this will be on the public works committee meeting, which will be, Madam Clerk?
August 17.
August 17.
Public Works Committee.
Moving on to Safety Services, Council Majority of Fodder.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, we have class B victory number license cabinet in the square, Garden City on C, EBA cabinet in the square, and this passes the meeting for Council.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have motion and second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Moving on, we have transfer class B L to EBA license for T's restaurant.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have motion and second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Yes. You hold the ball, Councilman Miss.
Moving on to ordinance, we have 5-17 on 5, ordinance amendment, title 10, chapter 32, code of city of Grand Street 2005, entitled motor vehicle in traffic, Malvern stop sign new rules sponsored by Councilman Stychos.
Do I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
I have motion and a second, under discussion. I know during the council meeting, during the committee meeting, we were waiting for a traffic report, it is attached, and the traffic report recommends approval of the proposed amendment for the record. Any discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6-17 on 2, ordinance amendment of chapter 20, entitled 11, code of city of Grand Street 2005, entitled parks and recreational facilities, Ocean Avenue, Seating Upwood Out, no vision, sponsored by Council President DeGrae and Councilman Fodder. This was passed the ordinance.
Councilman Fodder?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make an amendment to this ordinance, or I don't know whether it's.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second, under discussion, now you make your amendment.
Especially, I'd like to make an amendment, listening to all of the people's feeling, and I know we have a lot of competing rights in this situation. On the one hand, you have the fishermen's rights, which are constitutional, or whatever in our, private constitution, which was written right in the 1900s, in the 1800s, and even back then, they spoke about protecting the environment as well as protecting the rights of fishermen. So I think we've got some competing rights, and I think we need to do something to try to alleviate this problem. My amendment won't do everything, we're going to have to do more enforcement in our existing laws, and maybe we'll get some other things we can do, but my amendment would be to paragraph 2 of this ordinance, paragraph 1 to demand of, on the strip, which is basically such as the curfew hours for the use of the property, or filming. But paragraph 2, I'd like to offer a common amendment, that fishing shall be allowed, but confined to the shoreline and not from the roadway or guardrail. And my reasoning being that people mounting fishing poles on the back of a pickup truck from the street, I believe, is contemplated by the rights to use the shoreline. If you're on, on the shoreline, at the beach, with a pole, that's fine, but if you're going to, if you're going to make it a pickup area, you're going to mount the pole in, in the street, there's probably no parking allowed, we need to control that. As far as the other activities, that will have to be addressed by enforcement of other ordinances. This, this way, we're still reverting, making it clear that we're not preventing fishermen from the shoreline, because I think that that may give us a problem, but we can restrict people setting a line from the street, or from their vehicle, 50 yards out, and taking up a lot of space, causing a lot of problems. So I think that if we can control what was on the roadway, we'll still allow people to fish right on the beach, and I think this will give us some degree of control of other things to get, get handled in this situation, but for now, I think, you know, perhaps, I don't know if the debate is in favor of this, but I think this was the intent of our ordinance anyway. I think this just clarifies the fact that whenever we stop people on the, on the beach itself, on the shoreline, from sending the fishing line out and doing the fishing, if they're not going to be able to do it from a vehicle with, you know, ten poles on a truck and try to, you know, create a fishing enterprise, so, and that's my amendment to, to just replace paragraph 2.
I have an amendment to replace paragraph 2, per Councilman Fodder's instructions. Councilman Fodder, second?
I'll second the amendment. And then, under discussion, Councilman Fodder, so the purpose of this amendment is not to block fishing or limit fishing at the spot, it's just to create sort of a blocked road and blocking access to the vehicles down to the shoreline.
Correct, so if they're not fishing from, from the vehicle, or on, on our, on our street, they're on the, beyond the shore, and if they are protected, so I think I can do quite a constitutional right, basically. I don't think that that right extends beyond, you know, the 50, if you had a high-powered fishing line reel, you can, you know, cast from 50 yards to offshore, and you can't park in a vehicle and send the fishing line out. And I think we have a number of issues to protect the residents, because there certainly are activities that are going on that really are not associated with fishing, so those need to be resolved as well, but this is just a small step.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Point of Information, that was the original intent of the ordinance as it was. Councilman Stychos, then Councilman Lang?
Yeah, question, so, the, the tide is in, there's no beach, and you have your fishing pole, and you're standing on the seawall, looking down at the water between the guardrail and the ocean, and you cast. Is that okay? Who owns the seawall?
What? Who owns the seawall?
Well, I'm asking you, I mean, I don't know who owns the seawall, I would assume that if it's, if it's part of the shoreline, then I guess we could still do that, but that doesn't allow you to, you know, do it from your automobile on the street.
That's right.
And, and, you know, tide's going out, there are times, there's no beach in, in Arizona, because the tide is so high, and people can't, you know, utilize the, the beach, so, I mean, that's something that's outside of our control. I guess my thought is that if, if the goal is to prohibit people from fishing from their vehicles, and it's a very congested area, which it is a very congested area, then what we ought to look at is banning parking within so many feet of, of the guardrail, and then no one could fish from their vehicle, and it held a little bit more space down there when you make the turn into the yacht club. Wouldn't that be a little bit cleaner? I don't know, I don't know if it's a solid problem, it may come in some way on that, but I would ask the administration, if the chair of the administration, if they have any on that.
Turn your room.
Thank you, that brings up an interesting point about the parking, I think this particular ordinance deals with the scenic view and access to it. What I'm hearing from testimony tonight, there's a whole other issue of parking. I would suggest that this amendment to this ordinance is germane to fixing, I mean, what the intent of this original ordinance was. From what I'm hearing tonight, there's a whole other parking issue that needs to be addressed. Your, your suggestion would be more suited for a parking, perhaps limiting hours of parking, a two-hour parking than they do in other parts of the city, or there's some other solutions there that deal with local resolution of parking versus what the intent of this ordinance was, and that's essentially the access to the shoreline.
Well, my concern is, the, the whole problem here, seen, well, not the whole problem, but a lot of the problem is lack of enforcement, and either lack of enforcement or lack of ability to enforce. So if we pass an ordinance that's somewhat unclear, as it seems that this proposal is a little unclear, as to the seawall issue that I raised, that we're just going to make things more confusing. And what we ought to be doing is, is trying to make things clear, and as Councilman Fodder said, and enforcing existing ordinances. May I respond to, Council President?
Give me a counter, Senator.
Well, but the other, to carry the situation further, what if they're then standing in the street, no, no vehicle, and they want to cast from the street, and they have a special bucket or stand or something to put poles in, and they want to do it from the street? The seawall, you know, I don't think that's going to occur all that much, but from the street, they could then still cast, so that could be an issue. At least, and the parking ban obviously needs to be addressed because parking is an issue, but I think that they could still, if we don't pass this in this fashion, then they could stand in the street and possibly come up with some kind of a device or something to start casting on the street. I mean, I'm not familiar with every ordinance in the city, but I don't believe you can fish in a city street. And in this, this, this situation, this, there's the seawall, there's a guardrail, then there's a Serene, so I don't, I, I just, I think it should be clear whether you can, you can fish between the guardrail, between the street and the bed, because we don't want people from the yacht club leaving with one, leaving this meeting with one view of what was passed, and other people leaving with another people who thought was passed, and we have confusion, and then people say, well, you did this, but you, you said this, but you're doing this. And I just, I don't think your amendment is very clear about what people are objecting to, which is fishing from the seawall, but quite frankly, not. Okay, I heard plenty of testimony about cars parked. Absolutely, if they're, if that's fishing pole, it's actually automobile. Yeah, and I, I think, as I mentioned in another meeting, when I met with the yacht club years ago, I suggested banning parking on section, and that's the motion area. So I think the order.
First, a lot of amendment about stripping fishing from Ocean Avenue, we're not, of a parking ban, there's nothing before a stop parking. If Councilman Stychos would let you submit an amendment, this ordinance will come in, we can discuss that, but there's nothing in front of us.
I agree, Councilman Arquette. Councilman Lang?
Thank you, Council President. In the early 1800s, when the state constitution was written and ratified, I'm sure at that time, four automobiles, so we could go wagging, and went down there, and pushed off the back of that wagon. It's a red light, it's always been a red light, since the early 1800s, people have been pushing on that location since the state constitution was signed and ratified. There's a couple ways to stop it, but, let's face it, this is an ordinance that's being fishing, we're trying to work our way around it, but the Airbus, the law is probably better with saying it, but it's an ordinance to ban fishing, it's illegal, simply illegal. Safe Debate said, another thing, has anyone in the legal department of the city sat down with EBM, Council Resources Management, Safe Debate, or any other organizations that knows the law concerning the right of ways? I think Creighton is going to be the first community of Ohio that'd be fishing. And that's why I know we're employing lawsuits from several organizations, going to cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. And the bottom line is we're going to lose it. I was at that meeting at the yacht club a year and a half ago, and I proposed no parking, and I hate to use the word no parking, because it's not germane, and the answer was, no, we can't do that because we have big parks here, and they don't give a lot of parking. At that time, they didn't care about the fishing, but now they do. I'll tell you another time, I'm voting against this ordinance because it's illegal, I'm not going to spend city money, or vote to spend city money on legal fees in cases when you can't win, because they never want a case of taking away the rights of the public to have access rights to the water, none that I know of, unless it's private property, and this is not private property. Make it private property, as the city clerk said, then you can do whatever you want.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilman Stychos?
Uh, I would, on the amendment, I would urge me to vote against the amendment, I don't think it's clear, and it's just, it's just inviting loss, as the original proposal is. If we want, we're really serious about this problem, and we're going to have to be very careful, and we're going to have to step up enforcement, but we ought to be able to solve this problem. This is not, this is not a unsolvable problem, this requires police enforcement, it requires education of the fishermen, but it requires some effort, we can't just hope that that happens. I think people from the yacht club have every reason to be frustrated that the existing laws are not being enforced, but this is not going to do it, I don't, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCollough?
Thank you, Council President. I listened to the testimony tonight, I have the utmost respect for Councilman Stychos and Councilman Lang, but this I cannot agree with them, this is a quality of life issue. And I would want someone sticking up for me if I lived in a neighborhood and I heard what was going on. I live a mile or two, I'm very familiar with the area you speak of, and it could happen at Blackmore, on the, my neighborhood, and I would say we want some support, just like you folks are looking at. So I'm going to support this ordinance, and I know it's, it's just a dating step, we have to do a lot more, we have to put, we have to. We have to put, we have to control the trash, we have to protect the bay, we have to save the bay. I think this still allows for the fishermen to go to the shoreline, and it keeps the people that are using it as a party game to think twice about going down there. I want you folks to be able to enjoy the neighborhood, play the board, cherish your house, and raise your family. My hot vote off of that element, under the love of his son. And I hope that down the road, we can come up with a more extensive way to protect that beautiful spot. Thank you.
Counselor McCollough.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, I'm not a lawyer, so, but to me, this amendment that Councilman Pavecchio has added in makes it pretty fair. We've heard a lot of legal minds, a lot of very smart, intelligent people tonight talk about our constitution around and how we've made it legal for the fish on the shoreline. But it also says very clearly that, as defined, that fishing is defined in a lot of on the shoreline. I think that any legal mind, if this were to challenge, could look at that and determine where that shoreline is. I think also, we have a beautiful state, we have a beautiful city, and we are very fortunate that we have as many of these resources we do, and one of them obviously being the ocean. But along with that comes a lot of challenges because we all love it, we all want to use it in our own special ways. But to me, this amendment clearly says, state, we do not want any fishing on the roadway, on the guardrail, and that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. McCollough.
Thank you, Counselor McCollough. Counselor O'Keeber.
I think this reinforces your intent, so I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Attorney Prishenbaum, I know a lot of questions were raised in that debate, so if you have anything to add, I'd sure appreciate it.
There was a question as to whether or not anyone has spoken to any attorneys representing any of the organizations. I myself have spoken to two of them, Mr. Anthony Consismo, I think he represented that he was an attorney for CRNC, or advises them, and Attorney Pat Quillen, who I talked to this afternoon. My impression is that the city's always had the right to regulate whatever doesn't happen on their common roadways. That is, in a sense, corporation or private property, that is not shoreline property. If we closely examine Section 17 of the surrounding constitution, all the constitution talks about is the privileges of the shore. I agree with the memorandum that Mr. Ferguson wrote almost 12 years ago, which outlines the public's access to the shoreline. So to answer the question that was asked previously, I consider people have the right to fish in that location as long as they are within the shoreline, okay? Now, I understand that through whatever environmental, whatever, whatever it is sewage, high water marks and sewage, that the high watermark abuts the seawall. So I would construe that broadly to mean that an individual would have the right to stand on the seawall and fish. Because that is, in a sense, where the water meets, that's the, although it's artificial, that is the high watermark. So I would say you have the right to fish from the seawall. However, if you look at a diagram of a particular location, you'll see that there's a lot of room between that seawall and where the infractions are happening. And I think that this ordinance, and that revives by Councilman Pavecchio, appropriately addresses those concerns about what happens between the end of the road and the seawall. That appears to be where the problem is. I don't think anyone who votes for this ordinance could be construed as anti-fishing or anti-constitution or whatnot. You still have the right to fish. If it's over the shoreline, I would say that since the water hits the wall, seawall, that that should be construed as where the water meets, that is the de facto shoreline at that point in time. So I would put the seawall on definition, I would think that would be constitutional. I would think that CRNC's jurisdiction is to protect the shore from high watermark to the shoreline. So I think it is perfectly appropriate.
Thank you, Attorney. Counselman Pavecchio is followed.
Yeah, I have a follow-up question for Mr. Prishenbaum, who will walk back. I also advise, there is a sidewalk involved outside of that seawall, only on our property, on the city property. There's a sidewalk for people to walk on that needs to be protected as well. So that's where I'm more concerned with. So I guess, Counselor Stikers, you have your answer on the seawall, stand on the seawalls part of the shoreline. I don't suppose you could stand on a guardrail, it's pretty difficult, I'm sure you're a little under. I don't know whether we should add the word, or put the word sidewalk in there as well, but...
What's the Council's interpretation?
You know, in roadway, like the word sidewalk, as opposed to guardrail, there's not going to be fishing from a guardrail per se. I mean, on one side, it's assumed that there are...
It was very interesting when I talked to Attorney Consismo, and I explained to him what was going on in the area. And he explained to me that his constituents in that federal was, whether it's CRNC or another agency. I expressed concern that they're trying to ban fishing. And I explained to him that all we're trying to do is ban what I call fake fishing. So putting something back in the truck and doing, using fishing as a cover to do other things in that particular area, like adding a bar or something like that. But if you went down there, my impression, this is the exact thing, the exact thing, so I told him, if you went down there with your daughter to fish on the shoreline, that's perfectly reasonable. And so don't like this, that makes sense. So until then, I can report.
On the amendment, I will just say, over the weekend, when I discussed the intent of this legislation in detail, where Counselman Pavecchio, he recommended that we make this change. So thank you, Counselman Pavecchio, for understanding what the council was trying to do and helping us craft the ordinance in a little better fashion. On the amendment, clerk, please take a roll.
Counselor May?
No.
Counselor Stikers?
No.
Counselor McCollough?
Yes.
Counselor O'Keeber?
Yes.
Counselor Coulson?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Prentice?
Yes.
Counselor President?
Yes. Counselor O'Keeber, the motion has amended.
The motion is amended. We've heard a lot of testimony tonight, and I want to thank the public for coming out. I mean, these pictures, they speak a thousand words, it's amazing. And I did take a ride down there evening last week. It was around 8:30, 9:30 at night, and I witnessed the beer bottles, the beer cans, the soda cans, the pollution. The pollution was just staggering to me. And the testimony we heard, littering, public drinking, danger small children, pollution, public indecency, verbal harassment, I mean, it goes on and on. The people of Edgewood are asking for help from the city council, and they want to somehow put an end to this. And I think that the city council should weigh fishing rights versus public health, safety, and general welfare. I mean, that's the issue here. And what's more important, I think we allow people to fish, but I think we need to restrict it a bit. And I think that is built us, and I want to commend the council for working on this because this is a chronic problem, it's been going on for years and years and years. And we can see the public outcry, and I think we're coming here tomorrow. I'm going to be supporting this bill, I think we need to pass it. I'd like to ask some questions to the person who saved the bay, but come up, is he still here? Did you get to see us at all?
Absolutely, yes.
These pictures?
Yes.
And would you say the bay's been polluted by all of this?
We do not deny the fact that there is trash and littering problems down there.
Do you know what plastic bags do when you hit the ocean?
We don't, yes, sir.
And then even are ruining animals, then the jellyfish, maybe swallowed by a alien dog. So there's a tremendous amount of plastic bags being thrown around without warning at that point. But the question I have for you, I think one of the people that testified talked about on the bay and the Providence River. Is that the bay or is the Providence River according to City of Bay?
For legal purposes, there's no difference. There's no difference, legally speaking. The Providence River narrates that they're one and the same.
Right, but at that point, what would you call them? And you don't have to... I'll send you a memo when we find out the answer. And in that, in that area, how clean would you say the water is? Is it clean enough for swimming?
At times, yes, no.
At times? So therefore, you're saying it's clean enough for fishing?
Yes.
Well, I know in my area, especially in the summertime, when the odor, this culture climbs, and you can't tell me that there's not sewage running in that area. So we are actually helping the fishermen by prohibiting fishing because they're going to get sick on the fish they catch, no question in my mind. So I think we need to address that, find out what the density of pollutants are in that water, what type of pollutants, and at that point, we can see if fishing is a healthy thing. Thank you.
Thank you, we have to sit down and discuss further.
Counselor Lamb.
Yes. Safe Debate, maybe from Safe Debate, could you please come up again? I find it ironic that one of the terms in this whole proposal is that we're going to save the bay by doing this. Counselor O'Keeber mentioned the polluted bay and Hope Park, Hope Park you also mentioned earlier. But fishing is allowed because if I'm not mistaken, I was a saltwater fisherman for many years. Matter of fact, I was on the state constitution convention, and anyone who was on dealt with race away from the water. It's like I saw a pattern about these things. If you're saltwater fishing, you're not expected to hold ten-ton rod and stand there all day, eight hours. You're allowed to put it down in a bucket, if your car's close enough to the water, in the agenda that'll hold it. You watch the tip of the rod, when the tip moves, you know the fish is biting, that's simple. It's not you having a big potty somewhere else, maybe listen to the radio. But it seems like this particular group of fishing are practically a crime spree that's going on down in Edgewood. They're littering, they're drinking, they have wild bodies, condoms all over the place, but there's no enforcement. Now, I know it's not Safe Debate's responsibility to enforce local ordinances, I know it's not DDM, it's not Council of Resources Management. The people are supposed to enforce local ordinances. The city of Creighton, but nobody is going to say the finger at the city of Creighton. And everybody here should be doing that. There should have been barrels down there, and there should have been a police down there. There shouldn't have undercover police in the parking lot of the yacht club watching these fishermen if it was that bad. Nobody's done nothing. All we're doing is getting rid of the fishermen, making it impossible. Because after we get rid of this, we'll put some kind of a parking ban so that nobody can get anywhere near that spot unless you're going to the yacht club. And I just want to ask about the safety of the fish in there against the bay. When I was fishing many years ago, I fished the strikers, bluefish, scum, flounder. They're all migratory fish, they don't sit there all year round collecting pollutants like quolls and cleanse though. That's why you can't call all the citizens here because if you did fish in citizens here, anybody here did saltwater fishing? Okay, two, me and Counselman...
My father.
Yourself, or your goodness, I don't know. But anyways. You know, one of the problems, and one of the problems we have here is we're all individuals. We're all making up our own minds, and we're basing our decisions on how we feel, our past experience, certain things. And we're trying to do everything for people of Creighton, not against the yacht club, and then it's a beautiful place. Matter of fact, back in 1972, I took an S pole and out the Neentucket from the yacht club. But everybody has a right to fish. It's in our state constitution, I believe the state constitution. And I know this is going to get challenging to it. And all I can see is the city of Creighton throwing away money on a case that I never expect to win. And that's the reason why I voted against this, because I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of the city. And it's not just the people in one area, it's the entire city. So I want to thank you for giving your testimony, I want to thank you for your efforts on behalf of Safe Debate. And thank you very much. I appreciate what the Safe Debate does, they've done a wonderful job overseas, and I would be supportive.
Thank you. Counselor Stikers.
I have a question for the administration. There have been numerous complaints about violations of city ordinances at the end of Ocean Ave. I've asked twice for some kind of summary of police reports from that area. I have yet to get that information. And question number one is, has the administration compiled that information so that we have some actual facts to deal with?
And that just for the Ocean Road area, Counselor?
Excuse me?
Is that just for the Ocean Road area?
The Ocean Ave.
Ocean Ave, I'm sorry. I'm sure that that information can be accessed pretty easily based upon police logs. So I can't answer that it has been, but it should be pretty easy to get to.
Well, could someone tell me why it's pretty easily accessible that I haven't been supplied with it?
Yeah, I just know when your question was made, Counselor, it wasn't made through me. I don't know if we made a question or if I could find out who made it a question, but how long has it been?
Okay. The second thing is, what does the, have there been a lot of statements that, I think just about everybody agrees that city ordinances haven't violated on littering. We've heard testimony about the proper treatment of children, a lot of them running the street. What does the administration plan to do differently with the enforcement of ordinances in that area?
I think the administration has heard loud and clear tonight in going to this issue, Counselor, that enforcement is the number one issue. There are certainly ordinances on the books that can be enforced, and it's just a matter of getting touch with the police department to make sure that these existing ordinances are enforced. But littering appears to be the biggest problem, and as we know, catching someone in the act of littering is pretty difficult to do. However, that doesn't mean that shouldn't deter the police department from setting up radar patrols. And the issue you discussed, dealing with parking, which appears to be part of the problem. So it's a matter of the police department forcing this to exist.
So can we give a commitment that the police department will increase patrols in that area?
I can't speak on the police department. I like to value is that the administration will be working with the police department, can't speak for the police department.
Well, isn't the police department part of the city government?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor, when you open a question. Counselor, you have our assurance that we will address this with enforcement from the police department. We will pursue this, and as far as those reports are concerned, Counselor, I apologize, I was not aware that you had made that report. As you know, it's a little bit of transition, and it could have gotten lost in the shuffle. But I certainly will follow up with you.
Okay, so you are saying that the police department will increase patrols in the area?
Will take a look at what's necessary there and take the appropriate actions.
All right, so you're not, you're going to look at it, but you're not committing to increase patrols?
I can tell you that there will be more of a visible presence for sure.
Okay, what about, what about public education of the fishermen? And talking with them about the proper handling of their children? And respecting other people's rights to use the area? And the necessity for fishing license, things like that? Would we get a commitment from the administration to do some public education with fishermen this summer?
With all due respect, Counselor, being that that's...
With all due respect, Councilman, being that that's a reward, I think that if you can come up with a plan, I'd be happy to make whatever staff is available, you know, appropriate city staff available to you. If you'd like to put together a meeting, we'd be happy to attend.
Uh, it's not, I'm not looking for a meeting, I'm looking for, I think the suggestion I made at the previous meeting was that some kind of, uh, city official, uh, go down there and explain to people the dos and don'ts of the, of the area.
Absolutely, if you want to get together and talk about how we can do that, that would be great. Uh, I mentioned about, uh, you know, kids running around and so on and so forth. Uh, the city's not equipped to deal with that type of issue. Uh, that would seem to be something, I don't know, maybe a T C Y F type issue, so I, I can't commit to something like that, but if there's some sort of idea that you have where we can reach out to some of these folks, I'd be happy to consider that with you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Any additional comments? Councilman Kaplosis?
Lady Council President, Freedom. I would say that I would be supporting this ordinance. I respectfully disagree with Councilman Stychos and Councilman Lanning, I respect your opinions very much. I think this is a lot of trash flowing in the bay. I think this is still a lot of fishing, and also a lot of residents live there and to use the access coming to the water. So I would be supporting this and, uh, I think all my colleagues would as well. Thanks.
Any additional discussion? Councilman Akado?
I want to point, but what convinced me was when I saw these photos and I see how narrow passes to the water, and I'm counting the cars of the fishermen, and the fisher is in the top left corner, one, two, three, four, five, six. So you have six cars blocking public access. Probably those fishermen are not even from Cranston. And if I want to live a life there, I'm not even going to find pockets. So the Cranston taxpayer, paying their taxes, wants to enjoy access in the beach water, is prohibited by the numerous fishermen that come there and fish. So just pure reason to tell you that we need to do something, we need to pass this ordinance for the people of Cranston, for the people of Edgewood. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, before we vote on this, I will give my two cents on the ordinance. As the, one of the lead sponsors, Councilman Kaplosis, we've heard loud and clear there are issues in this area, and I can tell you that this ordinance is not the end of it, but the beginning. There are still certain things that need to happen on this street in this area related to potential parking changes, potential issues with the way the road is used. But for now, this would be first step to put some hours in place to give some relief to the people of Edgewood, to ensure that there would be a, a curfew in place to make sure that people aren't fishing after ten and before six, to limit fishing to a point on the shoreline to correspond with constitutional laws. I've talked with several lawyers, once named my left, talked with attorney Rossin. There is a balance between health and safety and fishermen's rights, and this codifies that balance. Uh, I do appreciate the comments from Councilman Lanning and Councilman Stychos, but as Councilman always used to say, sometimes fear of compromise is the best way to solve a problem. And I will never legislate out of fear of someone suing me. We talk to our attorneys, we get opinions, we do what we feel is right based on their counsel, that's why we pay them. You don't legislate from your fear. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
No.
Councilman Stychos?
No.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion passed. We have a quick two-minute recess to let everybody clear out. We go into six, and if we have to, a lot of breaks, so a portion of the recess is to end soon. Councilman, in the mood, let's take a second to come back. Resess, sure. Moving on with the docket, I will back to Vice President. All right, so back to six at seventeen zero one. Ordinance transfer and appropriations, amended by the fiscal year commencing July one twenty sixteen, and then due thirty one seventeen, four four, transfer, supplemental appropriations. I motion approve. I motion have a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, uh, we have the Resolution, uh, loan, uh, loan order authorizing the issue of twenty million general obligation bonds and notes in the city to finance the construction, improvement, renovation, repair, operations, version and equipment of public buildings in the city. This was also approved in committee through the House. I motion approve. I motion have a second. I motion have a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution, loan order authorizing the issue of twenty million dollars in general obligation bonds and notes in the city to finance the construction, renovation, repair operations in the area. And landscaping the roadside, all these training facilities in the city, all for, uh, the area too, including the non-urbanization of the area for us in the city. This was also passed in committee. I motion, I motion approve. Motion approve, have a second? Second? A discussion? No. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution, loan order authorizing the issue of four million general obligation bonds in the city to finance the acquisition, improvement, renovation, and repair of private public safety equipment in the city. This also passed, we believe, in committee. I motion approve. Second? Have a second? Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution authorizing the issue of four million tax payments. Many others have passed. I motion approve. I motion have a second? On the discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes. Yes.
Next, we have Resolution authorizing low vehicle tax payments. This was also passed in committee through the House. I motion approve. Motion approve, have a second? On the discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes. Yes.
Next, we have Resolution authorizing tangible tax payments. It's also passed in committee. Uh, and tax payments, I motion approve. I motion have a second? On the discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado? Yes.
Councilman Holfer?
Yes.
Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes. Yes.
And last, on the finance agenda, tax interest waiver approvals, it was also passed in committee. I motion approve. Motion approve, have a second? Second? On the discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado?
Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Councilman, uh, Taff, very strong.
Thank you. Okay. Too late. I just, it was worth my attention when we went for those resolutions with bonds, that, uh, I believe it was, uh, President Carina asked what actually are we going to be bombing? And I have a list of the things that we're going to bomb. Uh, I didn't share this with the council. I don't know if you want to wait till the next committee meeting, or I won't be able to share it anymore.
Um, if you want to share it tonight, then if you were at the financing committee, I think that would probably be prudent during the, of the time you make that date, so that it'll leave the council members' time to digest it.
Okay, if anyone has any questions, please contact, and, uh, hopefully I'll have your answers for the next committee.
Thank you, Director. I'll be calling to him in a minute. Kirk, offer. Councilman?
Hey, Mr. Council President, I'd like to point out the several claims, obviously they're all here in for information purposes, so please see and detach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Kirk. Public hearings, your, your points, about anything you would like. Mr. Santori, for your side?
Good evening. Robert Santori Jr., thirty to go, President Ramon Relling III, Chris Tanger. Uh, I heard a lot about saving Edgewood, and I just wanted to point out, uh, last week I thought it was said the L G plan, the meeting that National River had, from the police station, uh, concerned the construction of the L G, that they will have an Alice Avenue in Rockland, so it was only a few miles away from Edgewood. Uh, and actually, if anything were actually to go wrong in that area, it would affect not just Edgewood, Edgewood, but also other areas of Cranston, I think. Uh, so I think that it would be permanent for the council to urge National River to have a public meeting, an actual public meeting. Uh, those are the, those troopers who attended the meeting that was there, because they only decided to amend it on basis of a small strip of the whole project, so any time someone asks a question on the whole project, they were literally told, go to the website and give your question, and we gave your response down the road, I think, considering the environmental impact, and I think there's something similar here. So I'd like to see, uh, Cranston City Council and City being urged together to have whole National River campaigns, and have a public meeting in Edgewood, at least in Cranston, about this project, about this impact of this project, and what it means to Cranston residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. Could you think I don't have to say it, but the name of the address, who ran it?
Valerie Shirley, twenty-seven Fox Street, Cranston, Montana. I heard a lot of talk about trash, and trash is one of my cutaways, talking to Councilman Akado at, at the concert, and, and we don't even give out the residents a trash can if we don't put the garbage cans out. And I recently had open heart surgery, and as a result of that, I now do a sit called cardioirea. Since I do cardioirea, I walk in Shandale Lake at least twice a day, sometimes three times a day, almost seven days a week. And sometimes I have a friend go with me, and sometimes I do it on my own, but when I have a friend, we all walk. And that's what I believe cardio discussion is, why are there no trash cans here? You don't even give them a cleaning chance. They're fine legally, you know, they're dog anymore. And you know what they do? Because I walk in the morning, I walk in the evening, they leave it on the rocks and they put that, because there is no trash cans. And litter is a problem. You, people are lazy, they're not going to carry it home with them. Please just put some trash cans up. This is, it's not rock science. So that is my issue, and I thank you for considering that. I know that, I've heard that the, that's a state park, I don't care, the residents of Cranston need trash cans there, so if this is coming in to do the job, please do the job.
I would recommend that, Councilman, that was, we had this discussion about forty hours ago.
Amen. Amen. It's a state park, a farm, a section, or the supervisor for the area, the D E M, and they refuse to put trash cans there. I speak with the state senators, I speak with the state, state gate, they move in and get the trash cans there. That's why I go there, and they roast them, they eat them, because I cannot get any trash cans there.
The way you clean, I'm just kidding, I was.
The D E M, the guy at the D E M says, we don't need your trash cans, state beaches, we give you a plastic bag. I was just horrified.
Well, I don't react to her stuff that I'm.
Very unusual frustration.
So talk to the neighbors on the other side, put them on the other side of the street, there's a dead old way to put trash cans there. There's something you can do so that, I'm sure they'd be happy to have, put it on the side of the street. I don't care what you do, do something so that this, you know, put it at, at, wherever there's a congregation of people, you need to have trash cans. Trash is a back of life.
To the administration, this is going on tonight for a second time, in a second location, uh, at the next most public works committee meeting, could we potentially have Mr. Mason come and explain to us, you know, any reasons why they wouldn't have an open store, or there might be a reason why they don't have a trash can in the Edgewood area, or, you know, why we can't put trash cans in the Shandale Lake, just to let the public works committee know, so, you know, some of the councilors know, and those people ask questions. Thank you. So, uh, the public works chairman's not here this evening, uh, so I think my office is council president, I can have that put on his docket? Clerk? Okay?
Yes.
Good.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's all right. Okay, anyone else in the public? Everything, the bonds all passed, Mr. Littleso. Election of city officials, zoning board review. I have Lori Carleal for an alternate reappointment sponsored. Board of Camerons, uh, Democratic member and alternate. I know there was some discussion last month about how we would handle this, but my opinion is that I would take the first name, the party chairman, as given to me from the majority vote.
So the chair?
Yes.
Um, I spoke with the chair of the Democratic Party last week because I, he had previously told me that he's going to be submitting a new letter, uh, because a number of people on names on that list, um, did not follow by. Um, I spoke to him last week, uh, he does not have a letter, he has to be continued to next month, but he will submit a list of new names.
Okay, next to this request, we will submit it, we will continue until next month. I have motion continue? Motion continue, committee, have a second? Motion continue, second, on the discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Akado? Yes.
Holfer?
Yes.
Kaplosis?
Yes.
Councilor Westphal, the Regio?
Yes.
Yes. Report of the city officers. Clear. Executive Communications, report on hiring special counsel consultant, assuming charge of section fifteen oh five, I believe we have a report. Uh, if anyone had any questions? At once? And twice? No questions? Report, requesting place the pensioner, Captain Ronald J. Floyd, the Cranston Fire Department. Motion approve. Second? I motion approve, and a second? I see no objection from the administration, so I'm assuming he passed his physical and everything required, okay? Nothing.
Yes, the trigger shows this is performed, so hopefully approving.
I motion again, second. On a discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lady?
Yes.
Councilman Cyclos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arca?
Yes.
Holbert?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplasakis?
Yes.
Councilman Rafferty?
Yes.
Yes. Claims settled by the solicitor there, listed there. If anyone has any questions, please direct them to the city solicitor. Under Council President Communications, a long night, a minute to the six, so I don't believe we're any points. Sometimes we have long nights trying to stack meetings when we can, to make sure we don't have to be here more than one or two nights a week to have transparency, because if people have to be here at seven, and we announce we have a meeting at six, about school buildings, it's a little easier for people to be here at six. Or we're gonna have a special finance meeting, we'll have that on the same night, and have another meeting to try to ensure we continue to push transparency. Some of the legislation we passed, as I said, around the issues in Edward, these are only the first pass. There are more things we're going to have to do on Ocean Road regarding parking, trash. Hopefully, at the Public Works Committee meeting, we can talk with the administration, figure out why we went away from having trash cans in those areas. Thank you for coming tonight. Like usual, it's a summer night. We have a full room, so it's always good to see people come. In the middle of summer like this, sometimes there have been three or four people here. So thank you for coming, even though they've all left. Councilman Communication, Councilman Cyclos, you have the floor.
Yep, I have this issue, I did a report for the administration on what's happening with that. Talked to Mr. Lopez about it, talked to Mr. Verona about it. The mattresses in the backyard, Doug Smith sticking in the front yard.
Councilman, I believe Doug Smith has been to the location. He did not observe the mattresses. I believe he was there last Thursday. I will follow up with him to see if there's any other issues that he observed, but when he went though, he didn't report anything out of the ordinary. And did you mention that was an issue with a dumpster? That is something that I, quite frankly, I forgot to ask him about the dumpster. So I'll have to check on that.
Okay, let me know.
Will do. Thank you.
Any issue of Council on Communication, seeing none. Of course, I've already closed, got our whole business. I don't believe there's any introduction to new business. How about?
The proposed ordinance seven dash seventeen oh two, amendment titled in chapter thirty-two point five oh oh, codes in Cranston, entitled motor vehicles for traffic for prospects, street one hour parking, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Proposed ordinance seven dash seventeen oh two, amendment titled ten, chapter twenty-eight, codes in Cranston, entitled motor vehicle for traffic, open night parking permits, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on August seventeenth. Proposed ordinance seven dash seventeen oh three, amendment titled three point sixteen, codes in Cranston, entitled property tax classification, motor vehicle tax incentive program, refer to finance committee for hearing on August seventh. Proposed ordinance seven dash seventeen, report amendment titled eight point two, codes in Cranston, entitled proper maintenance standards, residential dumpster permit requirement, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on August seventeenth. Resolution for junior general sentence in passing legislation, nanny council school, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on August seventeenth. Abandon petition of a non-lane street at forty Monument Avenue. Petition filed by four seasons warranty, L O C, refer to Public Works Committee for hearing on August seventeen. Request from National Grid for publication at downtown, refer to Public Works for hearing on August seventeen. Bowing clients, our role to be referred to Cranston Committee for hearing on August seventh. These are property damage courts of Avenue Christina. She may take the neck from incident sometime in February two thousand seventeen. Claim of general ritual for the lodge incident on February twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. Along with stick for lodge incident of May twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. On the fifth, the lodge incident in twenty-two, two thousand seventeen, and June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Claim of rules, Marsdale, of the lodge incident on June nineteenth. First injury claims, Nancy Raycos, lodge incident on May twenty, two thousand seventeen. And Jennifer, in any of who you bond in the, in the lodge incident on June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. That's all I have.
With the motion sent, the information to the public committee. I motion again. I motion again. On a discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Lady?
Yes.
Councilman Cyclos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Arca?
Yes.
Holbert?
Yes.
Councilman Kaplasakis?
Yes.
Yes, and with that, the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be, I'm sorry, Councilman Director, you may enter.
I just wanted to ask if you had as a sponsor to Councilman Lady's resolution to...
Councilman Schools?
Councilman Schools.
Take it. Councilman Arca, you want to?
I'd like to be as a sponsor to Councilman Foley's resolution or ordinance on the notice.
I believe I was a sponsor as well, to see him. Councilman Foley, this legislation happens accordingly. Okay, with that, the council regularly, next regularly scheduled, Councilman. Reckio?
Sorry, Council President.
Okay.
Skip to the agenda. There was one other issue.